All right, first item on the agenda is the minutes. Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm glad you said that, I always forget. This meeting is being video and audio taped, and if anyone else is video or audio taping it, please let us know now.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd as so written, February 5th as so written, February 10th as so written, and February 19th as so written.
I will second that. Any discussion?
No.
None, all in favor, aye aye. And we'll go to own business.
I don't have any own business, I'm gonna save this for later.
Okay. We'll go to comments and concerns, anybody who wish to address the board?
Yes. February 10th, when the Chief's, Chief Spialakowski was here with the new Bowman candidate, after the meeting, I asked a selectman if he knew where his residency was, and he said no.
I'll try to say that again, where in what?
He didn't know where his residency was.
Oh, okay.
After the meeting, I asked one of the selectmen if he knew where the new candidate lived, and he said no he didn't, but it was in the 15-mile radius. So I was kind of curious, because, you know, you looked at his applicant, application, so he must have known that he lived in Dudley.
I, I knew that.
Okay. So, when I went online, I found that he lives like 22 miles from the station, and our chief lives 21 and a half miles from the station, and I thought there was a 15-mile... Now, you know, you say "as the crow flies," but is that a standard measure? I mean...
I can't ask, answer you if it's a standard measure or not. I know that that 15 miles "as the crow flies" was on before I got here, my first term.
Well, why don't we just change it and say, you know, somebody within 25 miles?
Well, that would have to be brought through town hall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
We can, we can do that, it would have to be changed on town hall floor.
I prefer going the other way.
What's that?
Ten-mile radius.
You could, we could do that.
Be done off, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We could, we could do that, but remember one thing, it wouldn't affect anybody that's here or anybody else.
I understand.
Okay? I, I wouldn't have a problem making it, well, it's hard to do 21, 20, 15, or 10 road miles, because it never works, because people come here so many different ways. I don't have a problem, we can, we can review it and see if we would like to do that.
Yeah, but is that how other towns do it, is "as the crow flies"? I mean, I did MapQuest, and it was 22 miles.
If, if I could, Mr. Chairman, usually how that works in other communities like Warren, it's considered, whatever the mileage said, 15 miles in this case, to the border of the town itself that the person lives in. It doesn't actually go to the person's address, it goes to the border of the town, the closest border of the town to the community that that is referred to. That's normally how it works, especially in civil service communities and other communities. That's the way, my understanding of it is, and it's always been explained to me, it's to the actual border of that community, it's not to the person's front door. That's how that, that's how that's normally stated. It's not just Warren, that's how it works normally anywhere, to my understanding.
It's border to border, correct?
Border to border. It has, it's not the person's front door, it's the, it's the border of the community. That's, that's normally how that, that thing works.
Yes.
How does this affect the officer or the town? I'm not, I'm not sure what this mileage thing has to do with the employee.
A lot of, a lot of cities and towns have a, have a requirement, how many miles you could live away, and/or have to live in the city or town itself in order to get a job. You don't see it in towns that often, because it's kind of hard to do, to get the people to work. Usually, and I've said this before, usually when we do a contract for the chief of police or something like that, we try to include in it, unless we forget, we try to include in it that he has, that that chief has to move to town within a certain time period. It was supposed to be in a, all our contracts to chiefs and so forth. Somehow, we, it got omitted, and I can't answer you how, I don't know, it was supposed to be in that type of contract to bring them closer to town. The current chief we have now does not have that in his contract, all he has to do is fit the bylaw which says 15 miles, and it is from, from the, from the two closest points.
But with regard to the other officers, it doesn't really affect them that way, does it? I mean, do they have to?
Well, I think you want at least within 15 miles, because you're first responders. So, you don't want, so you don't want employees to be 45 miles away.
I see. So, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to get, is what is the real reason for us to be concerned with this?
Who's my?
Is that because of the response time?
Correct.
Yeah, it's more for, for a chief or something like that, so he can get here quick. Usually, usually the patrolman and stuff like that, usually the patrolman and so forth, they're on shift, so they get here with the time they have to.
Right.
But we can look into it.
I mean, if it's a concern of the public, if you want to bring it forward, you know, we'll bring it to the, you know, if you want to bring it to the town floor, give you something to be looked at, but it will not change any current contracts that are presently in place.
But it can be negotiated.
Under, for a present employee? For the next guy, it can be, but if that person's already employed under that stipulation now, we, I don't think we can turn around and force a 10-mile radius after it's already been 15 for that person, in his present, in their present contracts.
Yeah, it would be possible to change it, but the only people it would affect are the people that aren't employed right now.
Correct. It's not going to impact the current place, it would impact the future.
It basically become grandfather once they work here.
Right. So you can't insert a new clause.
No. If you could, but you'd have to get the approval of, if you were negotiating, union negotiating. You'd have to negotiate as part of the contract for the patrolman.
Would that be worth the effort?
At least for the chief?
The chief is a different issue.
I could, don't...
If, if, you know, if the public still wishes it, I mean, you know, a new chief coming in after our present chief leaves it, for whatever reasons, it down the road retires, whatever, I guess, but it's not going to change his contract, you know, if grandfather it in, so if it's a concern for the next chief, or the next employee, fine, you know, we'll definitely entertain it, because it's the town's wishes.
Yeah, I think it would be the intention of the board that, that from now on, we'll make sure that the chief would be, have to move to town within a year. It's written in almost every other contract. We did have two chiefs that worked for us that had to move to town.
Kind of makes sense.
Absolutely.
It does.
Absolutely. Some, as I said, somehow it got taken out, it should have been in there.
You want to reset the water?
No, I think I am.
I have a follow-up question. At the fourth selection meeting on 3rd of February, it was brought up by, a town vehicle was driving around with a rejection sticker on it, you brought up the situation, and I guess Sean brought it up also, and you stated that you would pass it out to the police chief and find out what the story was, what, what situation is. He was supposed to get back to you the next meeting, which would be the 10th, in writing, and the meeting for the 10th, there was no mention of it, no written report, and I'd just like to know what happened. Did we ever get a report on that?
I don't remember seeing a report, man. Thought you had spoken to him. Well, we both spoke to Bruce, but I think you spoke to him last regarding after he went down there.
I'll call him tomorrow, I don't remember getting one, I will call him tomorrow.
I mean, he was investigating it, I don't have the final report, he was corresponding between Dave and myself, maybe Mr. Llobash is down here tonight, but he was investigating it, but I didn't see my report.
I'll call the chief tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other, yes?
Following up on what Stan suggested about town vehicles being operated with rejection stickers, there's information that would support, on the 26th of January, the 27th of January, and the 3rd of February, another town-owned and town-operated vehicle was out and about in an open fashion with a rejection sticker for safety reasons. I'd like to bring that to the board's attention and ask that that matter be looked into as well.
Can we ask which vehicle it was?
Yes, it was a police vehicle bearing mass registration, Police 119-D.
I am going to call the chief tomorrow, he's put up, he's got a letter together asking him again for the written report for next meeting pertaining to the highway and the matter that we just brought up, but I will talk to the chief.
Another question pertaining to special town meeting, which was held a couple weeks back. The floor was at a disadvantage for want of hearing clearly questions and matters that were being discussed at that important special town meeting. We didn't have the benefit of a microphone, either hired Wyatt in place or affordable microphone. Do we have any reason for that, please?
That's, that's a town clerk matter, I understand from Igor that he communicated to town clerk, that that needed to be set up, so I can't answer that for you.
Oh, maybe Igor can answer.
Maybe Igor can.
At the special town meeting, Igor, that we did not have any microphones and so forth and things like that, the question comes up, and why were microphones available?
Well, I was on vacation that week.
I knew you were on vacation.
And people that work with us, the young people, didn't really know how to set up the equipment there yet. We ask that, especially the mics, wireless mics, we ask if it could be helped by school districts, and I don't know if they did it or not, that's the reason for that was. You've got to remember, this is their system, and we are tapping into their system, so if it's not done properly, we could burn it out or something, or something like that, it would come out of cost to the town, that's what I'm assuming on that. So, that's the reason for those wireless mics.
Can we contact the school district and ask why they weren't available, make sure that from now on we have them available? I know it came, it surprised everybody that were there that night. We'll find out.
We've been trying to teach our people, but please understand that we are really not responsible for set up the sound system, school district sound system.
We'll find out, we're not blaming you, Igor, we're just saying, we'll find out.
They were very nice to us, and let us tap into it, and previously they were, you know, very helpful to us to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And just because I was on vacation, that wasn't done, so that's the reason.
I'll ask tomorrow, I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at school department, I'll find out.
And we have to make sure that they will be there from now on when we use the school.
Yes. A last point, realizing that we've had quite a winter with heavy snowfall, has been, at least from my observation, occasions that people have been plowing snow from their property out into the roadway, and in cases across the public way, and allowing a windrow to stand at the opposite curb from their property. I myself was personally involved with two interactions. One was a piece of tractor equipment being operated by a person who pulled out in front of me to bring his snow across the public way and deposit it on the other side of the road. Another occasion was a pickup truck, which I assume was plowing for a property on. My question is short and simple, have there been any citations issued to anybody in town for these infractions, which are outlined in the town bylaws? There's been at least two occasions, in my own observation.
I know for a fact that there has been some reports made to the police department, I don't know if citation's been issued, but we can find that out also. I know there's been reports, Jim. All right. Going to go to public hearing for application for petroleum storage license for the J.J.L. Enterprises 1,300 Main Street, which is the Extramar, and I will at this point... Turn it over? Give this a bath, Ron. And please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Scott Young, I'm a building engineer with CME Associates, we're an engineering firm that did the, the site design for the, for the project. Also with me tonight is Tom Danielik from Drake Petroleum, he's a property manager there, so he can help us throughout questions that you may have. First off, I just wanted to submit green cards and receipts and the letter that went out, all that type of stuff. We also have a check for the Republican.
Thank you.
And I think, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with the license, it's an amended license, not a new license to store, as everyone knows, it exists already. There's 20, currently 28,000 gallons of different grades of fuel stored on site, and in the future, there'll be 30,000 gallons. So, that's really what we're here for tonight. I tell you, short and quick, that's really what we need to do in accordance with Section 148 of the Mass General Laws, or I can kind of run through the site if you'd like, real quickly. It's what it's going to look like, so beautiful, and at night, no snow. So, these are just a couple of manuals that give you an idea what the site's going to look like. So, the existing store basically sits under the can, so the store's going to turn, and here's, here's 67 out here. There'll be four, four fuel dispensers with eight fuel tanks for dispensing fuel. These two on the western side will have diesel on them, on the outside. The rest of them will have different grades of unleaded fuel. So, you know, just again, because a lot of you folks haven't seen this stuff, it's, again, here's the overall site. So, the existing store is somewhere in this general area, the bus parking is in this general area, so the store is essentially going to sit where the bus parking is now. New canopy, the fuel tanks are almost in the same location as the existing ones. There will be a drive-through, a bypass lane for that drive-through for, just for people who decide not to go through the drive-through, or for emergency purposes or whatever, so there's actually two lanes that go around the building. Dumpsters, store, a couple of different storage sheds, for, one for Dunkin' Donuts and one for the convenience store. Stormwater's going to be held in two different locations for water quality treatment and for detention reasons. Entrances are essentially in the same spots, working with Mass DOT, we've had to straighten those up a little bit, and there'll actually be concrete, just at great island, but try to keep people queued up, but it'll allow the tractor trailer that's got the fuel to get in and out of there. So that's kind of a quick overview of the site itself, any questions on that?
One question.
Sure.
Did they ever come to a conclusion or a decision regarding the fence that the property owner buy where the drive-through was? I attended the planning board hearing.
Oh, okay.
They were, they were present regarding the headlights going around the corner?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the fence you're talking about is right along here, and along the backside, close up here, at the condo association had requested that a fence be put in, and at the last, at the last public hearing, it was requested, gee, people may want to walk down here. We're leaning toward not doing that, not putting an opening in there, let them come around the building, because they have the drive-through here and everything else, so it just really opens us up to issues, and all of a sudden, we're providing a walkway that's not necessarily in the right spot. We as designers wouldn't have put it there, so we're going to leave the fence as it, as it's designed, people can make the extra 75 feet walk, and that way, they're, they're not going to be crossing right after someone ordered, and they, they step on it, they go around the corner, we won't have people standing in those areas.
So is it white vinyl, just a vinyl fence?
It's just a white vinyl fence, right, it'll be a solid fence. Yep.
And so is that a sidewalk that comes down from that association around that fence into the, into the store?
We, we're not proposing any sidewalk there, no.
So it's just, it's just the road?
It's just the roadway itself that exists there now, that's correct. We are, as from a sidewalk standpoint, there is sidewalk along the front of the store, as part of the project, we are upgrading that sidewalk to make it meet standards now. So, the reason we're here tonight is, is, like I mentioned in the beginning, there, we currently have 28,000 gallons of fuel on site, and the new tanks that we want to put in are going to hold 30 gallons total. There's two tanks, one tank is 15,000 gallons of fuel, the second tank is actually split, it has two compartments, it'd be 8,000 gallons of diesel and 7,000 of super unleaded. So the 15,000 would be regular, 7,000 of super, and 8,000 of diesel.
So is, I'm sorry, is it, are we currently housing 22,000 gallons or 28,000 gallons?
We currently have 28,000 gallons.
28. So we're going from 28 to 30?
28 to 30, that's correct. Yep.
I want to ask a question. Now, so 2,000 gallon difference, I understand that part of it. Are we replacing the tanks strictly for the additional quantity, are you replacing the tanks because of something else?
Age?
Tom Danielik, Drake Petroleum. Well, they're getting up there in age here, or some 27 years old right now. They're single wall fiberglass tanks now. Obviously, we're putting some significant money into the property, so, yeah, we're going to upgrade all the equipment, bring everything up to higher standard, so, these are all double wall fiberglass. The interstitial, interstitial space that's between the two layers of fiberglass is filled with a brine. We found that, it's been our, our findings that that is the best way to determine if there's any problem with the tank. So there's a brine float level to watch that, in case there's any liquid that get into the interstitial space, and you send an alarm off to our tank gauge, same thing if it went out.
So it sounds like it's not so much the extra 2,000 gallons, but it's the fact of updating, updating and upgrading?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been on the phone quite a few times with Drake, and that, that is the primary reason, safety concern, and more than anything. We've worked out details with regard to the timing of when the tanks are removed and whatnot. It's required to have a fire official on site when they're removed, to make sure there is no environmental impact, there's no leaking or damage to the tanks whatsoever, the ones that are coming out of the ground, they have to go to a specific disposal yard for, and with receipt of the disposal proper, you know, properly and everything. The new tanks have to be, have to be installed. There's been several things we've, we've worked on with Becky from the planning board with regard to fire safety, regarding a NOX box, we have access to the site. There's, there is going to be some existing propane tanks like there is now, those are housed in the, in the front of the building, those have lobby columns and protected in front, so nobody can drive into them. I believe the kerosene, the kerosene is coming out of there, correct?
That's correct.
There will no longer be a kerosene dispenser there, which is now currently housed in the corner of the, of the parking lot, that's coming out, so it's strictly going to be the unleaded fuel and the diesel. So as far as I'm concerned, that all the safety measures and the permits and everything are, all that process is moving forward at this point, but it's pretty much, these, the tanks that are going in there are much better protected than the ones that are coming out.
I just want to ask one more question, it's not, it's more from my own knowledge, compared to the size of the building you have down there now, not the, where the tanks are any, but the new building compared to the old building, what's the difference in size?
The existing, the existing building is somewhere between 1250 and 1400 square foot, and the other one is 3285.
That's a double. Can you give us some timeframe as to, well, the construction process, how it's, what's going to close, what's going to open, aye?
Yeah, this is a, we are phasing, you know, management wants us to, to limit the downtime on the convenience store itself. I can't do much about the, the gas downtime, but, so they want us, through CME, to phase this construction, or develop a phase. Basically, we're going to build the store where the bus parking is now, get that 95% complete before we separate the property, get everything new go to the other store, open this store, relocate the barriers so that we can have, use that first entrance closest to the store, demo the gas in the existing convenience store, and put in the petroleum system. So it's a, it's a rather extended process, I'm guessing it's going to be five and a half months for us to complete it on 100%.
Let's just tell them that.
Yeah.
You mean if, don't you?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just real quick to bring it up, one thing that I was going to approach the board about regarding that, the issue of, of the fuel closing, and I had already talked to Tom about this, would be where municipal vehicles would be able to fuel up, especially fire trucks with big diesel. They have an existing tank at the highway department, I was hoping we could work out something where our trucks could fuel that in the interim, in the two or three, four weeks that it might take for those tanks to be up and, fuel dispensers to be up and running. We're going to have to figure something out to be able to fuel.
So you want, you want to be able to use diesel tanks?
I'd like to be able to use the, the existing diesel. I've talked to Tom, he was gonna, he doesn't have an issue with it, obviously, wanting to approach you, but give you, well, you know, advance notice, we're looking at, you know, five, six months from now probably, but, you know, we're going to have to need some way to dispense fuels, especially for the ambulance and the fire trucks, so that's really, in my mind, the only access, they already have an existing pump there with a fuel tank, they said they have more than enough to, you know, work with highway and that, in that type of season, and us as well, so if we could somehow coordinate, figure out, get permission to use that in a time.
Okay, we can do that. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Any questions for anybody else? I have no questions. So, basically, you're talking, Jimmy?
If we could, sir, if you could preserve that footprint there, you said there's a sidewalk in front of your proposed facility?
Yep.
Yep. And how far east does that sidewalk extend?
We're bringing it right up to Trudeau Drive, that's where we're going to, we're going to bring it to an end.
Is, is there any thought about extending that sidewalk for the pedestrians and the children that use Cutter Park?
Well, I, I know that our map does, I don't know your, your land as well as you do, but we do show that there is a, a tomb and sidewalk that continues there.
So there'll be no, there'll be no interruption between your, your build, your construction and the existing?
Unless one exists now outside of our, our frontage, I don't know that for sure, but you would, you would know better than I, but, you know, we're, along our frontage, the sidewalk will continue, so, and I, we do show a sidewalk here, I'm pretty sure that it continues on, to the park, I'm not sure, I couldn't speak to that.
Yes, hi, Michael Morell, property owner in Coe Hill Road. I urge the selectmen in the town to support this project, I definitely think it's a very good thing to, you know, brighten up the community and, you know, improve the neighborhood. Coe Hill Road is just right around the corner from that, so I definitely support the project, that's all I want to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else you wanted to add?
Well, no, in the, the whole plan set here, we've got the, the layout of, of the piping and everything else, it's a lot of, a lot of notes about what's going to happen here, and then all these plans we can leave with you folks, so, but it's really just documenting how the tank's going to be plumbed, and things like that.
Yeah, I don't think you have to explain that to us, I think if the, if the fire department is happy with it, and everybody else is happy with it?
Yep. And it's really just, we need to come before you, because you're the licensing board in the town, and if you, if you approve of this process through the, through the public hearing, for the amended license, then, then the fire chief can sign off on it, and then we can move on.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any questions?
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion to, to amend the license to allow for the tank as requested and as outlined. Motion's made, I will second it. All in favor, aye aye. Go ahead, you can sign off on it.
We have that, 20 years, we'll send that to you.
I don't know if you have already signed off.
Here, here you go.
You want to sign that? Here's the new one that you've got.
Because I knew there was that issue with the...
That's the, that's the correct one. For the, for the record, would you like just a small? Couple of them, or is one good?
Can we make a copy of that also? Other than that, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We wish you luck and so forth in Warren, and it'll be nice to have something down there. If you could just, if you could just change that picture, you bet they're at 329 and make it...
Rarely, no, I ask price. Rarely.
That might be a good price soon, the way things have gone.
Not to excuse you. Thank you very much, and we'll have a copy, we'll make a copy and give you back the originals.
Thanks.
I'm just going to wait in the morgue. And be careful going home.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, thank you.
Very good.
With correspondence.
Correspondents, an email from Peter Croftick and Kathy Bastard, who reside on School Street with a complaint regarding the town hall chimes ringing every hour throughout the night, continually waking them up during the night. They are requesting the board to consider programming them to stop at nine P.M. and begin again at six A.M. Question text out?
Yeah, might as well read the next one, too.
Okay. Facebook post from Allison Saxter Pierce, resident who lives close to the town hall, complaining of the chimes ringing throughout the night, looking to see if the board will consider programming them not to ring at night if possible.
We can, see if we can get ahold of Seth, and ask Seth exactly what can and can't be done, see if he can get back to us, yes.
Can we have them ring like from seven in the morning to ten at night?
That's what they're asking for.
I thought he said.
No, from nine, nine o'clock at night until six in the morning to shut them off. So it would be from six to nine. So just ask Seth.
You know, I know that St. Paul's, Mr. Croftick, or St. Paul's, and I think their chimes also ring.
I think you're right. Yeah, yeah.
So is he confused with those chimes, or is it just the town hall?
I don't know, I think, you know what we should do, see if we can get, I'm going to get Seth to come in here, or, so we can talk to him and see if we can get this settled. It seems like every time we fix one thing, we do something else.
Well, you know, it took four months, was it, to get these chimes going, I hate to see them.
I don't think we're considering stopping them by any way, shape, or form, I think we're just going to see what we can do, we don't even know what we can do.
That makes sense.
Okay, so we'll ask Seth if he can just give us a short note to come in and tell us what can be done, if can maybe set restrictions?
And at the same time, you get two dates for it, we could be.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we had two dates and none of the board of selectmen could make it.
Well, how about on a weekend? Sure, why not?
We can do a Saturday.
On that Saturday.
He's done it before. Just if you can get a couple of dates from Seth and see if he's available Saturday morning sometime, then when you have to have him come in, we can talk to him there. All right, go ahead.
Request from the Westmore Library requesting a one-day liquor license to serve beer and wine as part of a fundraising event. Fundraiser is set for Saturday, March twenty-first, five P.M. to nine P.M.
Do we know where that is? Excuse me? Okay, hold on.
Is it the senior center?
Okay, that's fine. I would accept a motion to grant their request as requested and to waive the fee, since it's a fundraiser. I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
And, of course, they have to have the normal bartender and all kinds of good stuff.
An email from resident Alice Wall thanking the highway department for their hard work during recent snow events.
Very good.
Correspondents from Highland Valley Planning Commission requesting chairman's signature of a city town owner agreement for a housing renovation.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
I would motion to have the chairman sign the agreement.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
Request for a renewal for F.Y. sixteen, F.Y. seventeen for property liability and workers' compensation. F.Y. sixteen will reflect a zero percent increase, while F.Y. seventeen would see a rate increase of no more than two and a half percent. Chairman to sign, I would make a motion for the chairman to sign.
Okay, motion's made, I'll second it, all in favor? Aye. Is that here also?
Yes. And if you would sign two places to copy that?
Excuse me?
Two copies.
Yeah.
Very good. Last notification from the planning board that they will be holding an informational meeting on three proposed zoning changes for the possible, for possible action by the town meeting. The meeting will take place on Wednesday, March eleventh, at six forty-five P.M. in the selectmen's meeting room. All residents are encouraged to attend and provide input. In addition, residents may take the survey on a potential medical marijuana bylaw. The survey can be found in the town of Warren's website, on the homepage, under Town Meeting Election Info. For more information on either, please contact the planning board office.
Okay. The next item is a two thousand sixteen budget, and I think we've already carried that, haven't we? I just thought people know, we had a meeting at six o'clock tonight with the finance committee, we went over certain aspects of the budget, we have to get ready for town, annual town meeting. We'll be meeting again next Tuesday at six o'clock to go over other aspects of the budget, and those will both be, that'll be working meetings, and we'll probably do so for the next Tuesdays, upcoming Tuesdays, until we get it done. We have the signature, signatory listing page on nine eleven, state nine eleven application.
The chairman's already signed to ratify.
Is the motion ratified?
Yeah, just all I need is a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify, it's over.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye. We go to treasury warrants and invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number sixty-seven in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents, and vendor warrant number sixty-eight in the amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents dated February sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
I will second, any requests and discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number sixty-nine in the amount of forty-one thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents, and vendor warrant number seventy in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-five cents dated February twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
And I will second, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number seventy-one in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents, and vendor warrant number seventy-two in the amount of fifty-nine thousand twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents dated March second, two thousand fifteen.
And I will second, again, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I'll go to other business.
Other business, we have, we received a notification, Polish Plate Dinner, being sponsored by the friends of the town of Warren Town Hall. Dinner consists of galloping, bolognese pasta, and Polish bread. It's going to be Saturday, March seventh, two thousand fifteen. Takeouts will be available from four to five P.M. The first seating is at five P.M., the second seating is at six thirty P.M. The Warren, it's going to be at the Warren Senior Center. It's a ten dollar donation, and tickets will not be sold at the door, so to call for tickets, you need to call four three six five seven nine four for tickets and reservations.
Pretty good. And the only thing I have for other business is, we have to put a rap in for the selectmen's assistant salary account, and it's about twelve hundred dollars. I would be in favor of submitting that to the finance committee.
Yes.
Okay, consensus?
Yes.
Consensus to do that. Anything else?
Um, no, I think that's about it.
All right, just so everybody knows, our next regular meeting is next Tuesday, March tenth, at seven P.M. But please remember, we also have, if anybody's interested, and again, it'll be a working meeting, but we will have another meeting with the finance committee on March tenth at six P.M. Other than that, everybody have a nice night and be very careful going home. Yes.
I have a curious question to ask, you had talked about that you approved the Maya contract, and you said it's a two percent increase, is that, do I understand that correct? For the tax fiscal year?
It's zero percent for fiscal year sixteen, and two point five percent increase for fiscal seventeen.
Okay. Do you have, because I had done a records request for that, and I believe the town pays like two hundred and seventy-one thousand a year for that, so two percent, or, is it two percent or two point five?
Two percent.
So two point five percent of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, that's a lot of money. So I, so I'm just curious, is, does this, do you happen to know, is this something that happens every so many years that they increase it, or is there a reason for the increase, or?
They increase it as, depending upon the experiences from the people in the group. So if there's a group, if the year that they, if it's a year that they spend a lot of money, it goes up, otherwise it doesn't. Usually it goes up a little bit.
It does, it depends on the claims that they make.
It depends on the claims.
Oh, okay.
The less claims you have, the better change you have in that increasing.
And we actually, actually in the past, we've got rebates back.
Yeah.
And we, I think for the last couple, if I remember right, for the last two or three years, we actually had rebates back, so to answer your question, it goes up, but sometimes we get money back.
Right, okay.
Okay, based on experience.
Right, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
No problem. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and I will second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming, be careful going.